All right, let's call the order. This is going to be City of Port Ritchie, City Council meeting for Tuesday, December 14. At this time, I'd like to stand and invite Pastor Ward for our invocation.
Lord, we're thankful for your goodness to us. Lord, we continue to pray, Lord, that you'd just put your hand on Walmart, Lord, and make that easy.
Dear for our officers, we're believing for the crime rate to go down there and the homeless situation. Father, we, just in Jesus' name, we're thankful for you giving us your Son as we remember this time of the year as a hope and anchor for our souls. And this Christmas season, Lord, we especially want to thank you for those that you've gifted to serve in our city. We thank you, Lord, for the one we're choosing to replace the council. We thank you for Will's wisdom here, and, Lord, we just thank you for our new Vice Mayor. And so, Lord, we thank you for those that serveth with wisdom and integrity and understanding for the times we live in. And, Lord, help all of us to know how to keep our hearts peering open and working together for the betterment of our city. Lord, we thank you so much for the help of our firemen in helping with the gifts for Christmas for the children, and, Lord, the special work that the police department did there, Lord, and we just continually ask for their protection and wisdom as they keep us safe, Lord. Most of all, we want to thank you this season for Jesus who came to save us and help us through the dark times of our souls and giving us the power of his Holy Spirit, Lord God. And we just thank you in prayer, and we ask it in the name of Jesus.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Scott Tremblay?
Here.
Vice Mayor Tom Kinsella?
Here.
Councilwoman Jenny Sorel?
Here.
Councilman Tom McClary?
Here.
City Attorney James Matthew?
Here.
City Manager John Duke. Let the record show that City Manager John Duke is absent from tonight's meeting. In his place, Finance Director Rachel Gossett.
Here.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to approve council minutes? There's two sets of minutes. Looking for a motion to encompass both, please.
Motion.
Motion to approve council minutes.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This time, we're going to open up the comments from the general public. The first person that's signed up is Linda Rodriguez. Welcome.
Linda Rodriguez, 5917 Lantern Court, here for the CAC. Just wanted to give you a little bit of update, what's going on. We did have our meet, your neighbor, at the Noddy Org last week, and it was quite good. We had a lot of new residents come. It was really quite nice. We had a great time. And last Friday, we also had the employee appreciation lunch. Had a nice little barbecue with salads and some donated desserts and stuff, and it was quite good. A lot of people showed up. We had a great time. The last thing I wanted to let everybody know is, on our Facebook page, Mr. Duke had shared with me a contest, a photo contest. So, all the rules are on our CAC Facebook page, but if you have a photo of something in Port Ritchie, it will go, we'll submit it to the Florida City and County Management Association, and they have a photo contest, and the winner will be on that, front of that directory. So, all the candidates throughout Florida will submit photos. Each government can only submit one photo. So, we're going to have an internal Port Ritchie contest. Submit them to the CAC via our Facebook page. We'll look at it, have that done by January 1st. I know it's a short timeframe, but we were just given this the other day. And then, we'll submit it to them, and hopefully, we'll be on the front of that directory. So, again, on the CAC Facebook page, all the written records.
Thank you. Any questions?
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. The next person signed up is Pastor Ward. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Leonard Lord, I pastor A114 Lee Okit Avenue. I particularly do want to, again, want to thank our city manager and Patricia, along with our permitting department, of helping the Christmas in the park happen. I appreciate that, and it was just the reality of it to happen, the success, and particularly want to thank our fire department for the gifts. At one time, they had both fire trucks out, and the police department. It was just, it seemed like just a very good spirit, and I just want to thank all of them for making it even greater, being there with us. It's just, just a joy to see families come out, children, and run around the fire trucks, the police cars, and just the time celebrating, and so, it was a good festival. So, our next one we're looking for will be the Easter egg hunt in the park, and that will be the Saturday before Easter. So, we'll be looking forward to serve the city again, and any way we can help, let us know, and thank you, Mayor, Council. Just appreciate what y'all have done this year, and things are just seem good, and may y'all have a Christmas full of the supernatural peace and joy that the Lord can give us. Amen. Thank you so much. Blessings.
Thank you, Pastor Ward. There's also Jackie Handel. Good evening. You signed up under comments from the city manager, but I think we're just going to have you, if you're okay speaking right now?
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Somebody fill that in for me. I apologize.
No, that's okay.
There are some others that signed up as well, who are donating their time.
Okay.
Good evening, City Council members and citizens. Today, the council will have a closed meeting to consider the second round of proposals presented by the Communication Workers of America and Local Chapter. Our original proposals were denied with the exception of a wage increase of 2%. The city employees represented here have a starting wage of $13 per hour. Like to mention, there would be a couple more, but they're currently working on a water main break to make sure you continue your water services. A 2% increase for that wage of $13 an hour is about 26 cents, or just over $10 a week. The inflation for this year is over 6%, and the state has raised minimum wage by 14%. The price of unleaded gas has increased over 60%. About this time last year, remember, it was just under $2, and the other day, when I filled up, it was $3.30. Do you think the 2% increase will cover the cost of living increase for these employees? Can the city retain its employees at these wages? Currently, local fast food is advertising pay at $15 per hour or higher. Our employees, more than 40% of them, make under that $15 an hour. If the city continues to raise wages at this rate, only 2%, they will not meet the minimum wage standards in the next four to five years. 2% for the next four years is only $14 and change. And so, they will be required to pay $15 as the minimum at that time, putting most of the employees in the poverty level, making minimum wage providing you city services. Also being considered tonight are the proposals for various no-cost verbiage updates, providing printed or digital copies of the contract to employees, so they can review it at their leisure, allowing employees to share accrued time to each other and a time of need, such as impact from the pandemic or other health issues, giving employees a week's notice for work schedule changes, so that they can make arrangements for schedule changes. For example, I have two children, and childcare is a big deal, so if you change my schedule, I need a little bit of time to manage that. Observation of federal holidays, increasing safety boot allowance and damage personal property reimbursement for those items that they get damaged while they're working, and longevity wage benefits for those employees who work for the city for 10 years or more. Consider these proposals that help your employees continue to provide the services to you and your neighbors. Consider the cost of not supporting your employees, losing the working knowledge of the employees who have worked the front line during the pandemic, who supported your services during many changes in management and a number of tragedies we've experienced here, and who, day in and day out, come to work to serve the public while struggling to support their families at this wage. It's a challenge to hire reliable employees at this time, to train staff, to learn all that knowledge, and go to the training is a cost. To retain your services and keep your city functioning has been a challenge, and we need to support our employees who make that happen every day. Consider what the employees need to continue working for you. Will you support your employees? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Handel. And there's a bunch of people here. By show hands, does anyone else wish to speak? Okay. Seeing no hands, also from the general public, anybody? It's open for comment. Okay, at this time, I'm going to close general comments from the public here. We'll move on to comments from the city manager. At this time, I believe comments from the city manager was written, there's a written update, and I think that was published, was it not? Was not? What's that? I'd like to submit it into the minutes then, so that the public can see what the updates are. Thank you. Is that okay with the rest of the council?
Yes.
Okay. So, that closes out comments from the city manager. We're going to open up now with any comments from the council or myself. I'll start with council that's relevant. We have a long night ahead. I'm passing.
I'm passing as well.
At this time, we're going to move on to comments from boards and committees. We took out a turn, so that's already been handled, and at this point, I'm looking for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
So, motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. The next item up for business is going to be the City of Port Ritchie Stormwater Feed.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Of course.
As we get into this council business, is there an opportunity that maybe we could move the number nine, the council member appointment at the very beginning?
That's up to the council. Aye.
Yes.
The council can change the order of the agenda. You could do that and swear them in at the end, or whatever. It's up to you, and that's just another choice. The other reason I think it was put last, is so as soon as they get appointed, you'd swear them in, but you could appoint them and swear them in at the end unless you want to do it in the middle of the meeting.
But my thoughts on it is, is we can learn more now as we go through all these other islands.
You could do it that way, whatever, just as long as you decide that.
That's how we learn. Hopefully, they've read the agenda before they came.
My preference would be to swear them in at the end of the meeting, and then give them time to research any issues that are coming up. Like, we have a book in advance, and we can research these issues, and, you know, I'd be more comfortable if people are going to vote on these kind of important items, that they, that they've had the materials, they've had the opportunity to talk to city management, which a lot of them may not have. So, I'm more comfortable if we can put them at the end and then...
I got an idea. Why don't we hear them first and give them the option of whether they want to be sworn in at the beginning or at the end, and then they can make the decision accordingly. If they don't feel prepared to sit at this meeting, that's perfectly fine. We'll swear them in at the end, and then they can sit and watch. That's fine.
So, what we'll do then is, we're going to move item number nine to the first item, and then we'll go on order from there, if you guys are okay with that. Okay? So, what I'm going to do is call item number nine, which is going to be the council member appointment, and I'm going to pass that to City Attorney, Mr. Matthew, for introduction.
Can you just get to it? As far as doing this, like I said, you know, it's your nomination process, so you can do it any way you want. I think three of them signed out. My suggestion, we see how many people you have, and then you give a certain amount of time to speak, or leave it open. That's up to all of you. Once they're done, I presume, you know, if you want to ask questions, you could ask questions, because whatever you want to do, there's no rules suggested that you can nominate someone, so just go leave it in your hands, if something comes up, just do what you just did five minutes ago.
Excuse me.
Of course, the mic works for that.
I'm really sorry, guys.
So, find out how many people you have.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do you have the records in terms of the people that have filled out this appropriate paperwork?
Yes, for your included in your packet, and I do have one more, to my knowledge this evening, to enter his record.
Okay. And let's accept that into the record. There's another qualified applicant that's here, and I'd like to accept them all if we can by agreement.
I agree.
Okay. All right, so we have four total then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And what I'd like to do is just go by order that's, that's in the book, and let's write down the list. And what I'd like to do is get every once in time to speak, and then, once they're done speaking, we can open up any questions to them, go on to the next person, and then, when we're done, we'll, we'll open up for discussion amongst us up here. Okay? If we're good with that, the first person I'd like to call is Linda Rodriguez. Welcome. Come on up to the podium, please.
Mr. Mayor, how much time?
I'd like to at least give them five minutes each, if we can, and you guys are okay with five minutes? Okay.
Time. Just a little bit about myself. I've been a nurse for 47 years in the hospital setting. What has been important to me is helping people direct patient care. During my career, I have also served in management role of regular nursing units, as well as a local emergency room. During the entire 47 years, I've also strived to improve patient and family experiences, as well as employee satisfaction. As part of the management role, meeting local and federal standards was also a major focus. I recognize the need for further education, so I also attended St. Leo University, obtained my bachelor's in healthcare administration in 1999. My family and I moved to Lakeport in 1987, 34 years ago, where I raised my two children. I've always been interested in Port Ritchie governing, but work and family responsibilities did not allow me the time to devote to the city. I did become involved when both my work and family dynamics changed. I've been involved with the Citizens Advisory Committee for two and a half years, and I've served as the chairman for two years. Due to my current work schedule, I find I now have the time needed for the city of Port Ritchie. I want to help Port Ritchie on the current path to open and honest government. The citizens deserve a transparent and honest government, something that, over the past 30-plus years, has not always been a priority for past elected officials. I feel the current council has taken major steps in moving Port Ritchie forward, and I would be honored to serve. I don't live on the waterfront. I do live on the east side of the city. Both these facts come with different viewpoints to issues that I feel is important for the city council to hear and consider on topics. I think my years in nursing, nursing management, and volunteering has helped me prepare for situations from every side, to look at situations and decide what is best for the city and all its residents, to be open and honest and listen, and evaluate what's best, and move forward from there.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Any questions or comments from council? Ms. Sorel? Thank you very much.
Good, thank you.
The next person that filed the appropriate paperwork was Caitlin Overbeck. Welcome. Come on up.
Hello, everyone. I'm Caitlin Overbeck. Most of you know me, so I did not write that much stuff, or I didn't write anything, but I did jot down some notes earlier. I have moved here about four years ago, and I was introduced to government for the city when my neighbor was like, "Oh, they want to pass this. You better get up there, and you better get involved." So, I've been very active for the, I want to say, I was here for maybe three weeks prior to getting involved in council. I served on the CAC with Linda, and Tom, and Jenny at some point. I own a business in Port Ritchie, so not only am I raising my family here, and I live here, I also am invested here, so decisions that I make, I know will impact both sides of those things. I try to stay open to my neighbors. They come to me all the time, and I try to look at different points of view. I think that's really it. I've got my master's degree finally. This is my last week, and I've submitted everything, so everything's good to go, and I'm a teacher, so anybody who doesn't know me, I, that's what I do. My husband was in law enforcement, and now we own the Noddy Org.
Well, thank you. I'm going to pass, pass it around if there's any questions, comments?
Just fine.
Any questions? Good. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Overbeck. The next person that's signed up is John Hoover. Welcome.
Thank you, council and citizens of Port Ritchie, for the opportunity to protect myself here tonight with open council position. My name is John Eric Hoover, and I've been a resident here in Port Ritchie for all seven years. As you're all aware, a lot has happened within our city in that short period of time. With that, we have to pass, I want to focus on our future. Our city has enormous potential, but we face significant challenges going forward. Aging infrastructure, business closings, restricted waterways, and a lot of financial resources are some examples that come to mind. Fortunately, we are seeing a revitalized interest in our area, that is bringing in visitors, enticing relocations, and raising our property values. Given this development, it is extremely important that we, as a city, seize the opportunity. We need to deliver value to our current and newer residents, so we're even on a way to keep, but continue to attract new people here now and into the future. I really am excited for what I'm seeing unfold here, but I'm cautiously optimistic about our ability to flourish without putting forth real effort to capitalize on the momentum we have. I love Port Ritchie, and I love living here, and I want to see us become a leader in commerce, tourism, recreation, and overall quality of life. It is out of that love and desire that I am bringing forth my availability to this council. I am willing and ready to serve the citizens of Port Ritchie and this council, and I'm confident that with my help and ideas, we will be well on our way to achieving great things together. To provide a little background on myself, I'm married to a wonderful and supportive woman named Amanda, who's here with me tonight. Although we don't have children, we are loving bunny parents to our little mini-rex named Ollie. I grew up with big dreams and ambitions of becoming successful, and I fulfilled that through hard work and determination. I do want to emphasize that I'm not a politician, nor did I ever really consider pursuing career in politics. When I was in high school, I was fortunate enough to be selected to attend the Illinois Boys State Program, where I served as an alderman. That was my first exposure to politics, and what an educational experience that was. Little did I know, or imagine even, that one day, I would be seeking a similar role. After graduation, I enlisted in the International Guard as a financial services specialist to serve our country in exchange for financial assistance for college. Realizing that I could achieve my career goals faster in the private sector, I transitioned to a full-time position at UPS and attended school in the evenings. Information technology was my passion, so I spent the majority of my career in that discipline. While working as a programmer, analyst at UPS, I also finished my bachelor's degree in computer science, as well as associate's degree in business administration. After 16 years with UPS, I moved on to consulting work with a couple of other companies, until I found my current employer, Humana, where I'm employed as lead solution architect for in Roman Building Systems. In addition to working full-time, I also own and operate a seasonal side business that focuses on rental property, investments, and IT consulting. I've also served a community leadership position, such as being on the board of directors for a baseball little league, managing an adult baseball team, and currently serving as a secretary and trader for a local Port Ritchie bowling league. Some of the things I enjoy doing in my free time are exercising, boating, fishing, bowling. As of late, I also rather enjoy watching our local pro sports teams compete for championships. Go Bucks! Hopefully, I provided you a little bit of my background. Again, I want to thank each and every one of you for the opportunity to talk with me tonight, and if you're considering joining this council, I'd be happy to take any questions you have at this time. Thank you.
I have one. Prior to living in Port Ritchie, where did you live?
Little bit.
Oh, little bit.
As where you've been 16 years, you're based out there, so...
Thought I heard an accent. I wasn't sure.
Question that I have for you is, you mentioned that you have a residence here, as well as some rental properties, so the properties within the city of Port Ritchie or...
So, the side business I do, it was a, I had a rental property in Louisville, and when I moved down to here, I kept that for a while, of course, it was to management there, so I sold my rental property assets. I have Louisville. I currently don't have any rental property. I just have my home here in Port Ritchie. I probably looking to pick something up. I have been looking to pick some things up, but that was in the market right now. It's kind of crazy market, so...
Understood. Thank you. Thank you. And the last person that's not printed in our book, but we have all the proper documentation, is Sherry Share. Welcome.
Hello, Sherry Share. Most of you have known me. I've kind of been involved. Maybe if I put this down, is that better? Yes. I've lived in Port Ritchie since 1991, and I've been in Florida ever since I graduated high school back in Louisville, Kentucky, in 1982. I've been in ophthalmology for the last 33 years. I've been with Port Ritchie, going through many ups and downs over the years, and I've loved where I've lived ever since I moved there. Couldn't imagine being anywhere else. I like the direction that we're going, and I would love to be a part of helping us move forward, maybe I might be a little bit more on the resident's side, making sure that we don't get lost in all of the new development that's going on, but that's all I have. Any questions?
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sharon. And I believe, let me just ask Madam Clerk, before we go any further, is that all that we had for proper documentation on this? That having been said, I was going to open for discussion, and then proceed, see how you guys want to proceed. One of the thoughts that I had is, if you guys want to, we can all probably write just the name down before we get into discussion, and if there's three names that are already there, then that finishes this whole discussion, if that makes sense. It may save a lot of time if we do it that way, or even if there's two, and that's up to you guys. In other words, if the votes are two, one and one, do we want to just go where the two's at, and then that's what I was going to suggest, to see how everyone feels about that. If not, we'll open it for discussion, and then nominate people on the down, the formal path.
I don't have objection, Lord. Writing it down, taking the majority.
And just see where we're at.
Yes.
Okay. So, if we can, Madam Clerk, can we have just four pieces of paper distributed up here? We're all going to write a name, and then have a tally for us. Is there any legal reason we can't proceed in that manner? When you guys are ready, we'll have...
Watch everyone, just one person.
If we have seven votes, we'll figure it out.
Someone voted twice on the same piece of paper.
The anticipation, please, for the number.
One for Linda Rodriguez. Two for Linda Rodriguez. One for Caitlin Overbeck. Three for Linda Rodriguez.
And so, without further discussion, I think we're... Before, I guess we make it formal, but I wanted to have a motion second, and then let the general public speak before we go. Looking for a motion?
Motion to nominate Linda Rodriguez for the vacant...
Second.
Okay, before we put it to a vote, I want to open it to the general public for any commentary. Saying no hands, is there any reason for discussion on this council? All right, let's put it to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Welcome, Ms. Rodriguez.
Congratulations.
Well, let's give her the option.
We will. Before we go any further, I did want to thank everybody because I know that one of the most difficult, um, challenges a small city faces is having qualified, educated, successful people volunteer their time to sit up here. And I say volunteer, there is a small stipend, but it, it's not near the amount of time that I think a lot of us put in, so, um, it means a lot to myself and council to have as many dedicated people show up and volunteer to sit up here and serve, so I just wanted to thank everybody first before we move any further. And if you guys have any comment, I'd like to welcome Ms. Rodriguez, come on up to the podium if you don't mind. And I wanted to ask you, would you prefer to be sworn in now and participate in today's meeting, or would you prefer to be sworn in at the end of the meeting and receive materials and begin, I guess after the holidays in January, it'd be your first meeting?
Your first major decision. Um, after the meeting would be fine, as you said, I'll have to get it.
Okay. So, what we'll do is, um, we'll have a swearing in after, and then before the CRA meeting, so it'll be the last thing we do in this meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. That closes item number nine, I'd like to move on to item three, which is the city of Port Ritchie Stormwater Fee, and I wanted to pass that to Mr. Matthews for introduction.
Let me just get to, uh, this is jetBlue, here it's in the front, right, number one? I told Ms. Goslin... I told Ms. Goslin that I would take this, since it's the first time you're doing this as a council, it's been, you know, in terms of a non-advalorem assessment. The, included with your package is the original ordinance back 15 years ago that established the stormwater utility fund. Before you is the present city code, you know, as you can see, the stormwater management utility, if you look at these sections, they're the exact same sections, but just different numbers, okay? It's been some changes to it, but as it morphed over the years, and if you look at the bottom of every section, you'll see the history, and you'll see that history includes ordinance number 06546, but just so you know what's going on here, is, uh, the city set up provision, as authorized by state statute, a stormwater management system to establish just adequate rates, fees, and charges for the services and facilities provided by the system. Pretty much what the system does is it tries to control stormwater runoff, okay? You see the statement of findings and purpose, and the most important thing there is that this includes just the city of Port Ritchie, okay? It's really ancillary to the water department, has nothing to do with water rates. The charge that the city has, the non-advalorem assessment, is on the water bill, no different than if it was on your tax bill, okay? So, that's nothing to do with water rates or studies or anything like that, it's just a closed system of charges solely for managing stormwater. The ESU, and I'll tell you why I'm telling you what that is, is the Equivalent Stormwater Unit, okay, which is just an arbitrary amount, and so what the city does, and all stormwater plans do, is say that a residence, now there are different sizes of residence, they're, you know, half acre, acre, but a residence, what we see, be deemed one ESU, okay? So, all residential property, a charge one ESU, I'll make a little more sense in a second as I go through this. I've already told you, it's all the real property within the jurisdictional boundaries of the city. If you look on the, one, two, three, fourth page, which is section 38, there's 363, you'll see there are categories for single-family property, a charge one ESU. You'll see that the charge for each living unit of a multifamily is a .8 ESU, and then there's the calculation for non-residential property. Now, as you can see, I hope I read this right, I don't interpret this, uh, the building department does, water department, I'm sorry, the 3,250 square feet for commercial property was, that's about 30 by 10, right? 3,000 square feet, right? Thirty, uh, 300 by 10, I guess, would be 3,000 square feet, so if you have a very large property, and they're gonna presume that if you pave the whole thing, so then what they're doing is looking at how much impervious, how much you pave, and if you do that, we're gonna charge you for that stormwater runoff. However, if you can get credits, okay, if you look at the next section on 38365, that you get credits if you develop facilities for the runoff, runoff management, okay? So, that's when you see DEP and SWIFT models say, well, you, we make, we make, we make developments do this, if you have a stormwater basin, you come in and we give you credits against what would be your ES, your charge, okay? And then, if you go further, there's certain exceptions, undeveloped property, vacant land, farmland, public rights away, then there's the enterprise fund, it's just established and, and further down, as you can see, it's 38-364. Excuse me. The fee per ESU billing unit shall be as currently established, which is $3, or as hereafter adopted by resolution of the City Council from time to time, and kept on file with the clerks, so we're doing this by resolution, being the first time it's ever changed, okay? And so presently, on the water bill, and, you know, you can, you'll see the billing and go statements, statements of the storm, this is in billing payments, statements of the stormwater management utility fee shall be rendered monthly in accordance with the regular utility billing cycle, okay? So, that's what'll happen, that's why it goes to effect immediately. So, pretty much, this is a, an assessment, what determines what the assessment is, is you do a capital improvement plan, so I'll defer to Ms. Goslin in a few minutes, they sit, you sit down, the city and says, well, here's the plan, and if it's going out for a year, I guess, this is what, how much money we need, and if you charge so much for ESU, we'll raise that over the course of time to maintain the assessment, okay? I'll leave, I'll explain the numbers.
And we have any questions on it?
It's pretty simple, if you, you know.
I did, I had a question, just for point of clarification. Municipalities, just in general, are very limited in terms of taxation, i.e., normally it's that warm type taxation, I think anything more than that generally is prohibited. Is this considered something other than tax, like a user fee or some other kind of just fee?
This is not a tax.
Okay.
Okay, it's a, we generally, outside of our municipal taxes, can't charge it a tax.
Correct.
This is not a tax, and it's not a fee, and they, our, our business venture, as I call it, a business enterprise, which is the water department, has to have studies done so we can determine rates, and then people can take us to the BUC to argue about those rates if they wanted to, that's something different. This is an assessment.
Understood.
Okay, so, and the city gets assessed for this, and it's a non-advalorem assessment to maintain the stormwater fund, and this state allows us to do that.
And for point of clarification, you say everyone within the city, but are stormwater responsibilities, do they extend to where we provide service for water outside of the incorporated area?
When you say service to water, this is a stormwater management plan, so we're concerned about water that runs on it, on impervious surfaces that creates flooding, so the short answer is, it only, it's only water bills, it's placed upon the water bill as a matter of convenience, okay? We could put it on a tax bill, it's just more complicated, and so the only thing you're doing is charging, it's for city residents only.
Okay, so, for unincorporated residents that have, um, our service, that purchased water would not be subject to...
They don't, it's on their bill now.
That's what I was trying to get, thank you.
I presume you were trying to get that.
Okay, that's all the questions I had, if anyone has any. All right, and then we're gonna...
Rachel, do you want to say anything about the, I'm sorry. She's divorced tonight, by the way, I should just have to tell her to speak for this. Explain the CIP and how you came to the figures and why it's jumping from, by the way, it's $3 a month on your water bill for residents, and now it's going to $5.50, more, it's going to $8.50, okay? This is for residents.
Correct, so in FY22, when we looked at the budget, we noticed that a lot of overhead and other costs are not being charged as they should be to the stormwater fund, so things like the audit, you know, we pay bills for stormwater, legal expenses, things like that were not being allocated there, and they really should pay for those expenses as well. So, also behind this, you'll see the different salaries that we put a percentage allocated to that fund, so, you know, finance, administration, there's charges there that they should also be contributing to. So, overall, in FY21, it was 193,135, and it increased to 317,234 for FY22, and that's mainly due to the salaries and cost allocations and overheads.
Okay. Any questions from council of either, is it pronounced Ms. Goslin, or?
Ms. Goslin.
Goslin, okay. I, I always call you by Rachel, but, okay?
That's fine.
How did it happen that you have such a large jump?
Because it was never allocated appropriately, like I said, so they never paid for their portion of the audit, and as an enterprise fund, they're also responsible to be in the audit, and they have their own portion of it, so really, they should be contributing to that expense.
So, the reason for this is because of the audit that we've had in the last year? Or...
No, the reason for the increase is they should actually be paying for the expenses that are occurring, you know, filing.
They're bearing.
Correct, so there's expenses for stormwater, and finance pays those bills, so a portion of our time is allocated to paying, you know, to writing checks and entering invoices in the system specifically for stormwater, but they were never allocating a portion of our salaries to that fund for that, so really, the general fund and the utility fund were paying for that previously, so we're trying to allocate a portion of the salaries and expenses appropriately.
What? Oh, I'm sorry.
How, how can you translate that into something easy for the people that are listening to this, that, because that's a significant jump, I mean, $5 is significant, so we need to have it explained so that people that are watching this, the people that are listening to this can fully understand how you came up with that figure.
Yeah, well, I included in the packet, you know, the specific positions that, and their allocations to the fund, so for instance, Finance Director, I oversee the stormwater fund, I also oversee the audit of the stormwater fund, so we allocated about 5% of my salary to the stormwater fund for that expense, that's a real cost of my time. And then same thing, so my finance clerk, she cuts checks for the stormwater fund expenses, you know, she enters invoices into the system, so we charge 5% of her pay to the stormwater fund so we can pay for those expenses. So, I mean, you can see in here all the, the different salaries that are charged, they're HR, you know, Human Resources, so they hire people to handle the stormwater fund, and 5% of her pay is being allocated to this fund now, for really, whereas before, like I said, the general fund and the utility fund were absorbing all of these costs.
Can I ask you a question? Under that theory, then, that means at the end of the year, if those expenses were to shift into another category, that means all the money we collect for this, in all fairness, should wind up in our general reserve fund on the other end, is that correct?
Hasn't run in effect for many of the tax funds?
It's not, what she's saying is they allocated salaries to be in the right spots, but if they're allocating their salary in part over to here, and we budgeted it for originally to be out of our general fund, there should be an overage in our, at that point in our...
Well, it's just shifting the expenditures to the stormwater fund.
Correct. I, I understand your, in other words, let's say, just for example, that we do this $5 on the water bill, and it shakes out to 100 grand by the end of the year, okay? We budgeted that 100 grand for the salaries out of our general fund, so in essence, that 100 grand...
It was between two funds, really, it was between the utility fund and the general fund previously, but it's, it's difficult to determine exactly how much of it was in each fund previously.
Okay, but...
Or to show the true cost.
The money is being collected right now, correct?
Correct.
So, we, let's take that 100,000 thing, and let's say it's 50/50 between the general fund and the utility fund. Theoretically, we should have, now have a surplus of 50 grand in one fund, 50 grand in the other fund, if we were to pass this full 850.
Not a surplus necessarily, you're just shifting the expenses over.
We're shifting the expenses over, but now we're also bringing in new revenue to...
But that revenue is specifically for the stormwater fund to cover those expenditures.
So, then I should have money left over in the general fund and the utility fund. If they were budgeted over there in the stormwater, or in the general...
Well, yes, and we looked at other funds during the budget process, so like the CRA, so we transferred some, some of those salaries over to the general fund, so...
Okay, so let's take the, so we're adding another fund into this.
It's shifting it around and trying to really figure out which fund should be paying for what percent of salaries.
But all that was done post the budget set, so the money is out now allocated within those budgets. Theoretically, all of those salaries are covered, we're now realigning the expenses after the budget and saying, okay, $350,000 of expense is now stormwater related stuff.
No, this was all done during the budget process, this is not brand new.
So, we have a $350,000 hole.
Correct.
Because, or 100 and something.
Yeah, the difference.
Yes. Because I know that, I, I specifically recall asking and having a discussion during, I think, the last budget meeting, whether or not we had enough money to cover this fiscal year to give us time to address this for the next fiscal year, and I think that we were told yes during budget season, if I'm not mistaken. Okay?
No, we, we needed a rate study.
But now you're asking for money without a rate study?
Correct, because a rate study will take too long, too people.
But that, we all kind of specifically asked the question, and we're told, oh yeah, we need a rate study, so we're covered through the rate study, but now you're saying, oh, we can't wait for the rate study, now we're going from the lowest in the area in rates to the highest in the area in rates by some 15%? I have a hard time justifying that to anybody. And my, my, the reason that I'd asked that during budget season is my goal was to do the rate study throughout this fiscal budget year, so we can reset it for the next budget year. And have documentation say, look, this is what people smarter than the ones up here, and no offense to any of the ones up here, because I'm including myself in that, said this is what is needed for the best of the city, and how we should proceed. Now, we're kind of shortcutting all that, saying, oh, by the way, we gotta just raise rates because I got a big hole in my budget, when we had the discussion that we didn't have a hole in our budget, or we wouldn't have a hole in our budget. So, the real question, what will happen if we don't approve this?
Uh, we would need to use all the fund balance and then some in that fund.
Well, let me, asking the question a different way, you said the rate study will take a few months. What, what harm in there is waiting until the rate study is complete, then you come back to council with all of the data backup and a hard number with supporting documentation, because I'm presuming that we would use up all the fund and then some over the course of the next fiscal year, we just started the fiscal year, so...
It would just, by the end of next fiscal year, by the end of September is when we would use it all up.
Okay, so, by the end of September, and we're now in December.
So, that's why we're trying to put it into place in the meantime, so that we're not using up all the fund balance, because if there's an emergency or something like that, we have nothing.
How about we use it as an incentive to get the rate study done?
We are working on the rate study, but we have to go out to bid for it, so it's a process, we have to get the bid approved, and then they actually have to work on the rate study, and then they'll report back to us, and then we have to look at it and present it to council, so it's a long process.
So, we haven't even started the bid process on the rate?
We are working on the bidding process now, yes.
And just kind of my thought along those discussions, I mean, one of the problems, if you look, the conification notes tells me that this was done in 2006, just by looking at the date on the...
By the other word.
So, it hasn't been addressed in a while, and it's been mentioned a few times, and it's just never been done. I'm not opposed on a temporary basis to increasing it, but I wouldn't want to increase it to more than what other cities or municipalities...
or municipalities or the counties doing around this because obviously they've done the similar rate studies in the similar area and they've set theirs to either six dollars or six fifty an hour, I believe is.
Yes.
The highest one says fifty.
In the back are some comparisons.
Right, so.
So Pasco County is at seven point nine two, Tarpon Springs is at eight dollars and fifteen cents, and Newport Ritchie is at six dollars and sixty-seven cents. Keeping in mind, I don't have on here exactly the year. I know it was more recent. I want to say these were updated a year or two ago for them. But ours hasn't been updated since 2006. So if we had increased it all along, then really I would only be here asking you for a dollar or two, hopefully. But because it's been such a long length of time and that number is so outdated, that's why it's such an increase.
But what I was going to ask is what if we were to, for example, change our fee to six fifty an hour, which would still be less in all the surrounding areas, do the rate study and then adjust it accordingly from the rate study? Would that?
We could. My only concern is I don't know how long it's going to take these engineers to complete the rate study. I have no estimate of time.
Because I agree, I'm not comfortable raising this to more than what the surrounding areas are without a rate study. I am comfortable raising it to be comparable to what other cities or the county are doing in our general vicinity. Because obviously they've stayed on top of it. They've done their rate studies and they've set their amounts between six sixty-seven on the low end and eight on the high end. So like, for example, we set it at six fifty, which would still be lower than the other areas around us. That would certainly help us because obviously we're charging, where are we at, three? I think right now.
Three dollars, three, yes.
That would more than double, but still be less than the surrounding areas, which would dampen the deficit, obviously, by the end of the year and then be motivation to get the rate study done. So, you know, I don't want to just arbitrarily pick a number, but I think we should, if we're going to set a number, not go just by budget, but go by what the surrounding areas are going, based on their studies because at least we have some rational basis, which would be the studies around us while we're doing our studies.
Here's my problem. I'm essentially going to our bosses and saying, we need money because we don't have enough money. We're not telling anybody how much money we need or what the documentation is. We're just saying, we don't have enough money. And we are going to eventually, or are planning to do a rate study to tell us how much money we really need, but we just know we need money. I've gotten my butt chewed out numerous times for something along those same lines. And I'm not necessarily happy about getting my butt chewed about that as well when we've kind of been seeing this coming down the road a little bit. You know, you say we run out of money in September, essentially, for the stormwater fund. So from my mind, we have until September to bid this out, get the rate study done, get the documentation so we can go to the citizens and say, we need this much, this is how much we have, and put together the plan of spending this money other than saying, we need money and we want to raise rates more than everybody else because we know that'll cover how much money we need, but we still don't know how much money we need. That's the way I look at it.
Well, the only problem with handling it that fashion is I think that there may be, and I don't know, there may be a problem setting it at a higher rate to compensate for money for deficits in the past.
No, I'm not asking for that. I've provided the budget for this fiscal year. So that's what I'm asking for, is January to September.
This is just this year.
Yeah, we're not looking to, for pass.
Okay.
Would we be borrowing out of another fund for a cash flow purpose? Probably.
Yes.
But then we are reimbursing that and that's, we have to be done by September is where the rate has to go into effect.
Yeah, but let's say you changed the rate in June or July. The eight fifty that she's calculated won't cover it. It's going to be.
It'll be too late.
It's going to be too late to even set it at something like that. That's, I guess, the problem you run into. But you can't set it at twenty dollars a month at the end of the year to cover for the entire year. That's not.
But we don't know if eight fifty is the right number. Maybe four dollars is the right number. I'm not saying, I'm not suggesting that four dollars is the right number.
Well, we have an idea by just the budget itself. We know what the expenditures are and we know what we're charging. Despite the study, we still have the raw numbers, so.
The problem is three dollars per day of sleep is not even sufficient. Your deficit last year.
Yeah, I'm not arguing three, I know it has to go up. And I'm not arguing that the fact that it is low. My problem is no one can tell me what the right number is, other than they need more money.
All I can do is show you the budget and when I need to support that. And currently, we make about ten thousand dollars a month in revenue and that will not support our current budget.
But is our, okay, so let's looking at it from a different perspective. We're having a rate study. What do they look at to determine rates? Because maybe the budget is overinflated with respect to what is needed from them. What does the rate study tell us?
I think we've been very conservative in the budget. Like I said, I've only put about five percent of my salary into the stormwater fund. So it's very minimal percentages. We try to be very conservative.
But what does the rate study look at? Do they clearly look at your budget?
Yes, they look at that. They also look at the capital improvement plan and the improvements needed and the costs associated with those. But it wouldn't take into the account the rate for that one year. It would increase the rate over multiple years. So it would be a steady increase.
So in effect, then, and I'm presuming that this budget doesn't take into the escalation, the rate study will likely come back at a minimum of eight fifty then, by what you're suggesting.
Potentially, but I'm not an engineer, so I don't want to commit to that.
But normally, the rate study is for a holistic picture. And more has to do, I think, with what you charge in terms of water, not necessarily stormwater. So I think that's probably one of the issues that I'm looking at. We're not changing what we charge for water. We're just charging the actual user fee, which would be the stormwater. And we know what that's going to be because we know what the expenditures are versus what's coming in. So, you know, that's why I'd be a little bit more comfortable as opposed to changing the water rates, which obviously that you would have to have a study and.
Oh, yes.
So, you know, obviously, we need to do the study, but I don't want to wait if there's, I'm kind of more of a conservative person in that I don't want to wait until we're up against it and then now we're either taking money out of the general fund or other places to compensate. I'd rather resolve it now so we're not jammed up at the end of the year, if we can, if it's possible. And even if we just dampen the blow, what I, by increasing it some now, just put us competitive with other areas and then, you know, the end of the study is done, if we have to adjust from there, we can. But, you know, I think just to get through the year, when I said the year, you know, it's going to take several months to get the study and to put a plan together. It's going to take time to do that.
This question I have, if we make a slight increase today and four months later, would we be able to, when we dig deeper to see what we really need if we make adjustments again?
I'll answer. The short answer is yes. Okay, you can do that. But since it's an assessment, it's kind of like you keep talking about a rate study. Now, that rate study is more than a rate study. Generally, the massive part of the rate study is water rates. While they do that, they look at the related issues such as stormwater and make up a capital improvement plan. So when you're assessing, you can't just charge as much as the market will bear. You have to have a logical reason for doing it, okay? And so right now, the short answer to your question is yes, you can do that as long as you can back it up. That's what we're assessing for. I guess, it's not so much that one residence, they could complain about it, but you do it to large, these are pretty large fees that go on some bigger places that don't, you know, that are put in big parking lots or something. And so you've got to base it on something. So if you were going to make this less, I would probably go back to Rachel and say, well, then rework the numbers to take in lower numbers so I have a capital improvement plan that you're voting on at four dollars and bring it back at the next meeting, the next government meeting or something like that. So you'd have to do that. So it's a long way of saying, yes, you can do that, but not just arbitrarily pick a figure. You have to base it on something. Does that make sense? Yeah, so you can do that. It's just that, even now, if they were going to vote, I was going to interrupt and say, look, you're going to say four dollars and fifty cents, based on what? You know what I mean? You'd have to have a capital improvement. You've got to base it on something. So you go back and look at your methodology and say, well, I'll take three percent of my time. Oh, we're working just much, but that's something that you could face a challenge. The answer is yes, you just have to bring it back and rework the numbers, yeah. It's kind of like you have a rate study and then you could do it. Well, you've got to have a capital improvement. Sorry for the long way today.
Along those lines, if I may. I mean, even if we did our own internal rate study, I wouldn't be comfortable going more than what the surrounding areas are. If we did our own internal rate study, I'd only be comfortable going up to either six or six fifty an hour, which is still slightly less than everything around us. So that's just my humble opinion in terms of, until we have an engineer coming into the study, that's where I'm at with this particular issue. I'm not comfortable going more than the surrounding areas.
One question I had from, well, two things. One, in the resolution, we bounced back between ESU and ERU.
Let's walk it tight off.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it says the annual rate, so that to me.
Well, it's an assessment, so you looked out and see what, that's how much it would cost the city to run that fund for a year and then worked it up. Okay, so this is annual, right? You did work, this is for an annual rate. That's all my understanding, right?
Correct, yes.
Yes, so in other words, you would technically, you're supposed to look at this twelve months after you pass it, right? And see if the capital, if the plan changes, right?
So you just never did the annual part for the past fifteen?
No, and normally, it's a lot easier if this was. I would think it'd be easier, next time you do the budget, to start at that end after nine months and make an annual, so you do this each year and do it then. Does that make sense?
Well, I can say wholeheartedly, I will not vote for raising it from the lowest to the absolute highest in the land without supporting documentation and a full plan as to what exactly we're doing and how.
I have to agree. It's an awful big jump without some kind of reason for it. I can see a reason for it. I'm not saying that you're not giving us a reason for it. It's just that we have to justify this to these people out here why their bill is going to go up to eight fifty.
And I.
And I agree. I think we're all probably in agreement to that point. So the next question is, do we do kind of nothing and pass it along until they've had a chance to do an internal study and come back with a little bit more information? Or do we try to set it somewhere that's at least competitive? When I say competitive, in the same ballpark as everywhere else, that gives us time to get an engineer and do it, in my opinion, the correct way.
I think we can reasonably justify the six dollars and not a penny more until we have some studies.
Yeah, because we are one tenth of the size of Newport Ritchie and Tarpon Springs and, you know, a little flip on the map with Pasco. And for us to exceed that, see, I just can't see it. I mean, you know, I know that we've had multiple problems in our budget in the past and that we're finally starting to get this clarified. Thank you very much, Ms. Gosling, for the help on that.
Yes, so this is, I'm jumping up and down, but I do appreciate all of the effort that's going on. I just have to jump up and down.
We realize that it's not you that wants to go out here and assault all our residents for another five bucks. But, you know, it's, we just, it's just a real surprise. We have been deceived in the past, at least way since I've been sitting up here. I've been deceived in the past by people that we thought were experts. So I'm a little skeptical. So I have to, I have to hold on this one and say, I need more.
I'm comfortable with the six because I think that puts us in less of a bind towards the end of the year in terms of the deficit.
So you're going to deal with that in CIP?
It won't have my recommendation.
You just told us we couldn't.
I did, yes.
Yeah, so we actually have to put, it has to be kicked down the road anyway, to the next meeting at least. And then backfill.
Rework the CIP, see if you can cut some corners and come back. But you could say, look, we'd like to see that number be around six or something. I mean, that might make your job a little easier, right?
Yeah, let's do that, see if they can work that number around six.
Is that more reasonable?
Yes, that is. I mean, the issue was that, you know, it's now December and I'm working with a budget that's an annual budget. So the longer you kick it down the curve, now I have less months to collect that amount of money. Do you see that issue? So if I only have five months now to collect a twelve-month worth of budget, that's why the, that's why it goes up a little bit, so.
If we have to have an emergency meeting to get it done, then I'm fine with that. Rather than, because we don't have another meeting for another month, which is.
Right, so in January.
Right. So that's going to be.
That's nine months.
That's another entire month off it, which gives you.
I mean, really, though, we wouldn't be able to implement it until the billing. So it just depends on the billing cycle. It could potentially be in February that we implement it, if we vote on it in January. So that's eight months' worth. But I mean, I can definitely come back in January. I can, I can look at the six dollar rate and I can provide for you.
Yeah, I mean, I think part of it is you have to put together the CIP plan and all that. I know you're working Christmas Day and all that, and I understand that.
And New Year.
And New Year.
So what's the, when's the billing cycle? So if it's before the next meeting?
It will be.
In terms of January? In other words, if we get it on the January bill, that gives you nine full months to collect.
Yeah, it just depends on how hard it is to implement into the software. And I don't know, I don't use the software somehow.
The next meeting is on the eleventh. If they pass it, we go on to the next bill.
Okay.
Okay, problem solved.
Okay, that's what I was asking. So let's see if we can bring this back in January eleventh at that meeting with the goal to set it at the most at six. And then we'll go from there.
Until there's a further rate.
Until there's a true study by an engineer.
Correct.
To address all the issues.
Correct.
Right, right.
Then you'll probably really tick everybody off.
Okay.
All right, is that my consensus? We're good with that?
I agree.
I agree, okay. All right, so we're going to close item three. We're going to move on to item four, which is the approval of Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for Water and Wastewater. And I'm going to pass that to Rachel for.
Thank you. So this is for the city to apply for two infrastructure hazard mitigation grants to improve water and wastewater systems. Both of these grants require a twenty-five percent match from the city. The water main project is a total of two point five million dollars and the wastewater project, that actually changed. So that'll just be for four generators and the cost will go from nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars to two hundred and twenty-three thousand six, sorry, eight forty-four. So the total cost would be two million, seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-four for both projects. The city matched to that twenty-five percent would be six hundred and ninety thousand, nine sixty-four. So we're just looking for a motion to authorize the city manager to sign the grant application notice for this grant program.
It's my understanding the purpose of this grant is to bring up to date and to repair lift stations, water mains and main valves.
Yes, I believe it's to, and Pam, our grant coordinator, can probably speak to this a little better, but I believe it's to improve the water systems as well as, like I said, those generators at the lift stations.
Okay. So and we're just, at this point, voting to pursue this grant?
Correct, yes, knowing that there is twenty-five percent match from the city.
That having been said, we didn't obviously budget that for this year, so this would be something for next year's budget discussion if we received the grant.
Or, yeah, I mean, it was not budgeted for, so.
Okay.
It was not?
No. We did not know about it at the time, so.
Yeah, but it wouldn't roll over till next fiscal year anyway, so.
By the time we get the grant.
Then we can raise water.
Sure.
Stormwater rates.
Go with the study. All right. Do we have to vote on this formal motion? Are you looking for a motion to approve?
A motion to set our grant writer on in this.
Second. We have a motion of second. Anyone from the general public wish to comment on this item before we vote? Seeing no hands, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Looking to move on to item five, which is the approval proposal for wastewater study, Florida Rural Water Association, and that's going to put in Miss Gosling as well.
Yes. So this is for consideration, Florida Rural Water. So this is for consideration, Florida Rural Water Association to perform wastewater collection system hydraulic evaluation and recommendations for sewer system, and this is due to the impact of the development of 126 duplex units at the Keys at Cody River. The total cost for this evaluation is about $12,750, and it is to come out of the utility fund. So we're just looking for a motion to approve that. And the Florida Rural Water Association is on the approved engineer list.
I have a question.
I do too, but I'll let you mail for us the same one.
The Keys at Cody River should have been paying impact fees. Is this fee covered by those impact fees?
No, because it is, it's an evaluation of the system, it's not a direct improvement of the system. We're just evaluating it.
So the Keys at Cody River came and put in development, now the citizens have to pay for the evaluation to see if the Keys can go in?
I'd like to pass this off.
My question was along the same lines, because when we originally talked about this, it was set up for 72 homes, which was the original plan, and I think that was the original study that was done. Obviously, one of the, one of the problems that I had, and this is one of the issues that I had with this particular project, is we were adding more than had previously been added, and it was my understanding that the, that any cost, whether it be a study or the actual implementation, should be covered through impact fees if we were going to do that. So that's why I was wanting to know, you know, if it wasn't addressed then, even if it's addressed now, why that wouldn't be covered by impact fees?
I was looking at the city charter, and it does not say evaluation of in the city charter. It specifically says, like, you know, addition to, construction of, so it's actually fixing the system, or improving it, adding to it. It's not evaluating it.
Asking the question a different way, if we say no to this, they can't get a CEV out because they don't know if the sewer rate, sewer can take them. That's not our problem. I guess that's an incentive for them to pay the fee now, isn't it?
So when I saw this, I had a problem with this for that reason, so I can tell you that that was my issue.
I agree.
And...
I agree.
And I...
How good of an impact fees?
Counselor Miss Rell, I'm sure. Hey, Bert.
Well, when we went through this, I was under the impression that they weren't going to take care of that. It was in the impact fees that appeared to be included in that, I didn't see it pulled out like this, so...
Yes, I can't ask our citizen, because, yes, we increased the units under the impression it wouldn't be costing additional money to the city, and it has a benefit to the overall city, to now say that, oh, by the way, this $12,750 is covered, okay.
Particularly when half the city was here from that area. If you remember, I remember all the citizens here, and to have them pay for this after hearing their commentary and their objections. So this was one of their specific issues, they came and talked about, you know, all the infrastructure, roads, water, sewers, so...
To me, impact fees paid for by developers might make quite a few, and then are just at the impact to the city for the usage.
So I have no problem with this if that cost is passed along to the developer.
Yeah.
Other than that, I don't see spending the city money to do it, that's for sure. There's been no motion or second, so it's not open to the general public. So is there any other further information from the city before we pass this along? I don't know what the correspondence has been with the developer.
I feel as if we're missing something.
Yeah.
I can transfer this over to the operations manager, he actually created this on random, so I think he will have a little more information.
Doesn't work.
It is definitely my recommendation, and I've also spoke with the, you know, the utility forming out of the field, that this study has to be done. We can't go forward vertically. We've concurred with the building department on this, and that, you know, this study is definitely to evaluate the lift stations and the force main that goes through, you know, through that part of the east side of that city, especially with the impact. We're not talking about a few homes, we're talking, you know, a large development, so this is, the only reason we brought this issue before council is because this is where we're at. Building Department is not, is not able to release the permit to go vertical based on, you know, our hold on this study, so...
The building department can request that the developer prove that the lift study, or the lift station is capable of supporting the development, for issuance of permit.
We're not arguing the need, I think the need's there.
Yeah, I'm not arguing the need. I'm arguing who's picking, who's paying for it.
Right, like I said, I just am just providing additional information, why we need the study, but...
That's a simple letter. We don't know our lift station can handle it. Prove to us otherwise. And then we'll give you your building permit.
Do we need to vote, or if we're by consensus, just, I guess if there's no motion or second, it's just, it's just done, okay? Before we go any further, actually, I'm going to allow the general public to speak on this item before we go any further. So anyone that, from the general public, come on up, welcome, come on up.
Carlos Jeff, it's Better Development, 665478, Avenue Prenos Park. First, let me clarify the facts. The city has not done a study in their system according to Richard Weeks in 40 years until you know, looked at your pipes upstream, downstream. They just did a smoke test, found 27 locations, which are open areas where your stormwater is coming to the source of it. My lift station is already hooked up, connected, permitted with DEP. I pump, you're upstream. The problem is upstream. No, it's not my problem. I'm paying fees. Yes, I'm paying fees. I'm paying $175,000, I'm paying $338,000 in fees. This is your problem. I was approved for 192 units, I reduced it to 78 homes, then I came back for 126 units of them. I'm way below the capacity that was adopted, and you're holding my permit. You're holding my permit illegally. I think my unit's to go. You need to fix your problem, whatever needs to be, and assess all the rest, assess the rest of the city. It is a problem the city has. There are pipes that are undersized, pipes that are cracked. My lift station connects to a six-inch pipe that goes directly to the senior permits. Your staff has refused to accept my application for permits. Illegally. Because I don't think that you created this issue about capacity out of imagination. So, no one has done a study. So why do you take it out of me? This is selective prosecution. You're holding out. I can't commence a search. I obtained approval, got the permit, went and built my first site, completed my software, I'm ready to go. They will not accept my permit application. I think it's very unfair. If you have a problem in your system, it's not because of me, it's because you guys did not take care of your pipes. The pipes are cracked, there's underground intrusion, there is a water system, that's why you call it fees. They decided to do a study. You might guess, you're going to do your study, buddy. We're connected, we are legally connected to the city system today for 192 units. I'm only doing 126. The staff doesn't want to take direction from anybody, they're afraid to lose their job. I need you, the city commissioners, to get direction to approve. It's going to take us nine months to build, at least. We're going to bring you lots of real estate access to the city, general revenue the city can use. You are underestimating your problems with the sewer. Why? Because you haven't looked at it? You haven't tested it? Why do I have to go test your other lift stations in the city? When I'm already hooked up? You created a monitoring, it doesn't exist? So I think you're fairly holding my permit. And we are, we're having financial losses at this moment due to this fact, and I'm very, very aggravated, that I can't get an answer out of anybody. So I urge you to let the staff process our permits, get our permits, build, we pay our fees. Tons of fees. This is a study the city should have done in time enough. So I don't know what you're looking at me to pay for, but I'm paying my fees.
Any questions?
So let me ask a separate question. This analysis is not his connection into the system, it's a downside review of the system after he's connected, or...
Yes, it's an overall evaluation of the impact of all, once the units are built, the total impact of that sewer system into our current one. So this model is going to evaluate all the lift stations and, and the force main that is going to be connected to that system.
It's not a condition assessment, it's a, it's a capacity assessment.
Yes.
Why didn't we have that included in the original review?
That was due to predecessors, I was not included at that time, that I...
Predecessors last year, or predecessors way before that?
Before that.
Okay.
When the development, actually, when it was probably zoned for the 196 in the beginning, I would have, I would have had that model done.
So we never analyzed the 196 units, or whatever the...
We have nothing on, we have nothing on record.
Excuse me, Congressman. Since that point, you have allowed a lot of other developments to go in, no one has asked a question about the capacity. Capacity came about because it was a storm, and the sewer started backing up somewhere upstream, not on my side, upstream. That's because there's water intrusion from your regular stormwater into the system. Mr. Weeks just expressed to me, they have closed, I believe, 27 of them last week alone. They just found another 24, I believe is the number, I don't know the exact number, but he mentioned there are cleanouts that are totally open, there are manholes, I believe have the lid, so, and they'll say concern about capacity. A six-inch line for a force main is a pretty big line. We have been hooked up, we have been connected, we have been granted the rights to do that. What we got to do is move forward and get the vertical permits, and I think you guys are holding us hostage. Or something that, let's just say, for example, the study says, well, it's too much pressure, but what do you have to do? You have to fix it. You have to go spend millions of dollars, whatever it takes to do it, because it's on your side, not on mine. We just put new lines and fix the whole system. We're connected, we have water meters, we have lines, we got to go vertical. And at this point, you guys are holding us. I think very unfair. We're part of the community, we pay taxes, we have, are going to create a great revenue for the city, we need to, we need to get this proposition. I mean, we're at a point right now that, literally, my meeting tomorrow is, Morgan and Morgan, guys, let's just go figure out what needs to be done, because I am tired of not getting answers. The study will tell you that if you have to improve lines, you can improve. It's nothing to do with me.
Here's the bigger problem, if the lines are insufficient, we have to increase lines before he gets a CEV out.
But here's where I'm at with this issue. I don't have any further questions, can we...
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. And what I can tell you is, it's my intent, and I don't know if the rest of council's going to agree, but it's my intent, I prefer to look into this with city management, I don't think I have enough information at this point to make a decision, as I sit here, but I'd like to be, have it brought back at some point, some additional information with some of what you gave us, as well as additional information from some city staff.
I want to talk to the city.
And so I do want to reset this for another time, because I'm not comfortable voting on this now until I have some more information. I'd suggest that I won't with additional information, but that's where I'm at, so I, I wanted to say we'll look into it and then address it.
Mr. Ray, I've been for this, after this for two months.
I understand.
Can't get an answer. City manager won't call me back, talked to me once. Understand he's out for leave, I understand, there's something else in charge. You got to give the staff the idea to review my drawings, look at them, approve them, we've a ver, fill, you have to fix it.
I understand, I'll take note of what you're saying. This is my first time addressing it.
Isn't the first time we've ever seen this?
This is a particular issue, so I want a little time from our end to address it.
Okay, can we set up a date, time?
It'll be January 11th, will be the next.
Put it on the, put it on the agenda item for January 11th.
If we can do that.
I'll be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So by consensus, I wanted some additional information.
Definitely.
Set in for the 11th.
Okay.
So that'll close out that particular item. The next item is going to be item number six, which is the approval of the new police car equipment purchase, and I was going to pass that to Rachel for introduction, I didn't know if she's going to pass it to the department head.
Yes, so this is for the equipment, for three vehicles, for lighting and emergency equipment for them, based on the Tampa contract that was used. The estimated cost is about $38,049, and that's coming from Penny for Pasco.
Was that, that was a budgeted item?
Correct, yes.
And does that include all the equipment that our current vehicles have, cameras and everything else?
Cameras, yes.
Camera equipment, all of...
The cameras are separate. These are the lighting package, emergency equipment, but all of it is, it's just three separate parts, but it's all out of the same pot of light.
Okay. But these cars will have not only all the lighting, which is included in here, but the cameras, like a whole?
That's right.
Okay.
I'm confused. At the end of the day, we're going to have three complete cars for our budgeted amount?
That's correct.
Okay.
And these are competitive prices?
Yes, the Tampa, city Tampa went out to bid, and this is the contract that they, was the winning bid, and this is with Dana Safety, which we previously used for other procedures as well.
I'm comfortable with that, if you guys have any further questions, any more motions?
Motion to approve purchase of equipment to outfit the new police department controlled cars.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number seven, a surplus of police department service shotguns. Pass that to Rachel.
This is for city council consideration, two service shotguns located within the police department that are ready to be deemed surplus. Subsequent to being declared surplus, the shotguns will be traded for future upgrades.
I have a question on this. The front says two service shotguns, the inter-office memorandum has six, nine shotguns. Are we two, or are we nine?
We're at nine.
You like it, Ms. Rachel?
Okay, so we are consideration for nine service shotguns to be surplus.
That's right. We're trying to, since I've been here, obviously, trying to get the vehicles to look the same, uniforming, the uniforms look the same. This is just another aspect of that. Right now, there's weapons on the road that have different operating mechanisms, such as where the safety button is, and where the slide releases. We have Remington and a Mossberg, they're in different locations. So not only is it for uniforming, but it's also for officer safety, in case you get into a critical incident, the operating system is exactly the same for the officer that may have to pick up a weapon.
And that's because they qualify with those weapons?
That's correct.
If we surplus out these nine, do we have presumably the next nine budgeted in already, or...
Yes.
Okay. Do we already have the next one?
We ordered one.
Why didn't we just order three more Remington 870s?
They don't make them. The company's out of business, so that's why they're going to have a Mossberg.
I'm rather coming back in business.
But they're not in business right now.
Oh, okay. Can't wait.
Well, the question is, can we, I guess here's the question, I don't want to dispose of these until we have the new ones in.
That's correct. They won't be. This is just so that you would agree that they can be surplus. Once the new ones come in, we train them in to the vendor.
Okay, so we're pre-approved in the surplus when the new ones come in?
That's correct.
Okay. Welcome for a motion?
Motion to approve the police department nine service shotguns as surplus property and relocated by proper means determined by the police department.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. And that brings us to the last item before this wearing in, which is going to be the surplus of obsolete or non-functioning public works equipment, and I'm going to pass that.
Thank you, this is for public works equipment surplus, I'll pass this to operations managers now.
Yes, counsel?
Uh, yes, counsel, these two pieces of equipment, they're basically non-functioning, it would cost more to repair it than to replace, the mower has already been replaced, and the hand tamper is also gonna, is gonna be replaced, and they're both non-functioning, and we're asking to surplus these items, so we can remove them out of the warehouse.
Question, have we replaced them yet?
The mower has, the tamper, the tamper has not been yet replaced, it just doesn't work, it just doesn't work anyway, so we're looking to replace it.
Who's this budgeted items, or?
Uh, they're within our budget to, to purchase items of that size.
Okay. That's all the questions I had, looking for either motion or discussion.
Motion to get rid of Sal's lawnmower.
Go ahead.
Are we done cleaning, flowers?
No. Sal keeps breaking stuff.
Uh, for the record, no, we're gonna have more next year.
All right, so we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. At this time, I wanted to revisit item nine, the council business, which is our council member appointment, and I'd like to invite Senator Rodriguez, come on up, please, and have our city clerk swear her name.
Hello, hello. How are you?
Good.
It's dangerous that way where I can hear us.
Okay.
Is this okay? Yes, okay. Okay, Rachel, write in and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm...
I do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support, protect, and defend...
That I will support, protect, and defend...
The Constitution and government of the United States...
The Constitution and government of the United States...
And of the state of Florida...
And of the state of Florida...
That I am duly qualified to hold office...
That I am duly qualified to hold office...
Under the Constitution of the state...
Under the Constitution of the state...
And that I will well and faithfully...
That I will well and faithfully...
Perform the duties of councilperson...
Perform the duties of councilperson...
On which I am now about to enter...
On which I am now about to enter...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, looking forward to, to working with you.
Same, thank you very much.
And the executive session.
Thank you, thank you.
And this, Rodriguez, just a reminder, we do have, we have a CRA meeting to follow as well as some executive session, so as hit the close of this meeting, we'd like to have you come up here and have a seat. Okay, thank you. At this point, I wanted to move on to any old business, if heavy?
No.
Okay. Looking for motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, what else? We'll just take a five-minute break from that, and we'll go into the CRA meeting next.